And then the League of Women Voters will take the questions and they will submit them and ask the questions accordingly. So if you could join me, we'll stand up and do the question. I'm Special Agent Richard Black of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all. And to my wife is Bernard Lofti from the League of Women Voters. She has a staff, there's four altogether, and she will introduce the people here. So I'll turn it over to Bernard.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
No.
Okay. I am Bernard Lofti of the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County. Welcome tonight to the League's presentation of the candidates for Trinidad City Council. Candidates for the three available positions are Katie Breckenridge, Ph.D., Cheryl Kelly, Michael Morgan, and Jack Tuttle. These are four-year terms and each member receives a $50 a month monthly stipend. The Trinidad City Council is comprised of five people who are chosen by the city's registered voters in even numbered years. Council members must be residents of the city and they serve four-year terms. Council members select from themselves a mayor and a mayor pro temp. Council members enact laws and establish administrative policy for the city. They enact ordinances, adopt resolutions, and approve the annual budget for the city. Members represent the city on a variety of local and regional boards and committees. The League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization, encourages the informed and active participation in government, work to improve standing in public policy, and influence public policy, education, and advocacy. The League is dedicated to providing impartial information to voters about candidates and the political process in order to help them make informed decisions. This is part of our citizen education program. The purpose of a candidate meeting is to give citizens an opportunity to hear the candidates' views on a variety of issues. The League of Women Voters of Humboldt County is a nonpartisan organization and does not endorse candidates or political parties. We hope that you will give the speakers your candidatures and will refrain from any demonstrations of support or opposition during the forum. We will thank all the candidates with our applause at the end of the forum. The format for our program tonight will be as follows. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question and one minute for a closing statement. Our usher, Jessica Flacher, back there, will hold your hand up if you want a card. She will bring you a card and a pen so you can write your questions and then she will pick them up and bring them to our question sorter, Cheryl and Peckham, who will screen them for to eliminate duplications and questions of a personal nature. Our timekeeper is Ann Deal, and she will have cards to hold up for you when you have 30 seconds left, or when you have 15 seconds left, or when you are to stop. When it says stop, you finish your sentence, not a run-on sentence, and if you don't stop, then she will ring the bell. Now I would like to ask everyone to turn off their cell phones. I'm going to do the same thing, or put them on silent, or vibrate, or whatever. And we will get started. The candidates have drawn numbers from the order of the closing statements, and I will use a random grid for the order of the questions. You will now have a chance to answer the questions from the audience. We're going to begin with Mike. And the first question is, what makes you the best choice to serve on the council?
Thank you. It's nice to be here and good to see such a great turnout. I think we're all great candidates and we all do want us to serve Trinidad and do a good job of it. I feel very confident in making that statement. I'd say probably my only higher qualification would be my experience, served on the council for four years, 2008, and participated in the government and business in town for about 17 years now. So, same way, cumulative experience in the city is probably what I can offer.
Thank you. Jack, you're next.
Thank you. I would love to continue to be a part of the city council. I was elected, I was appointed in May of last year, and I have been in any city one before. And for me, this is just a joy to be part of the council and to listen to my neighbors and their issues and get to come and share what their concerns are with the city. Again, I don't have the formal experience that Mike does, but I just have a lot of gratitude to be part of this team.
Thank you. Cheryl, you're next.
Thank you. I think in terms of qualifications, from a civic standpoint, I was selected or appointed to the planning commission three years ago. I've served on the planning commission and two years as chair, and then was appointed to the city council in January of this year. But maybe more importantly, some of the work that I've had the privilege to do in those two roles, like working on the general plan, drought contingency planning, the water advisory committee, short-term rental policies, et cetera. And so I'm just committed to, actually, before I talk about that, since I've got 30 seconds left, I just want to, maybe something on a personal note, is that I think my colleagues would say, people I've worked with for years, would say that my unique qualification is my ability to listen to other people, to absorb facts, and then to make decisions based on that, you know, pretty much unemotionally. So I think that makes me uniquely qualified in some respect for civic duty stuff.
Katie, it's your turn.
It's a pleasure to be here. A little nerve-wracking, but still a pleasure. When someone, I was walking, when I first got here with a friend, and she put me up to this, she said, "You'd be great on the city council. We need new blood." At mention of blood, I kind of was like, "Oh, really?" But I loved the city, and I thought, "This is an incredibly unique place, and I'm here for the generation. I want to be involved and I want to get involved." So I decided to run. So in preparing for this, I thought about, okay, so you're new blood, so you're fresh and interested, so you love this place, but what can I bring? Then I thought about the fact that I've been a psychologist for 45 years, and my job has been to listen closely and to help people resolve conflict and to come to peace with their different needs, and it builds community, builds families, and it brings us closer together.
Thank you. Our next question, we will begin with you, Jack. The question is, in the order of importance, what are the two or three most important issues that you feel the city currently faces, and how would you address them?
Water would be, continued safe drinking water would be one of the most important things, I feel. I would like to, I just signed up to be on the board to help with Congresswoman Kelly to help make clean drinking water, sustainable drinking water, to prevent droughts and long-term shortages. I also feel the second most important is for a safe city. I'm seeing a lot of homelessness and transit activity that is making people feel unsafe in this community. I want to build, help get people maybe off the streets and give them the help they need.
Thank you. Katie, it's your turn.
Like Jack, the water issue is a major concern, and I have been reading the water reports in preparation for tonight, and I am so impressed with the energy and the engineering and the technical ability that have been, you know, aimed at this topic. And the city is still looking for more solutions, but I'd like to be involved with that. I'm also interested in the Native American issue and, you know, see if there is some way to, you know, move the conflict from a locked place to a place where people are more content. And which brings me to public processing, which I'm very committed to trying to bring the public into these discussions.
Thank you. Mike, your answer, please.
I'd say the first thing is to relook at the budget. With this decade's high inflation, our budget is really big, very bloated. I don't feel like we've done anything to address it at all on the council. So that's my number one priority, that's why I listed up the profile for you, at least. The second thing is, I'd really like to get the police back in town. That's something that, while I was on the council, we went through losing our police department and slowly been atrophying to the fact that we don't have a ring town anymore. So that's like my number two. And then number three, I'd like to look down at the, look at the lockdowns and the effects that that had on our businesses and what was done, and if there's anything we can do to support the businesses, including my own, to make up for some of that and patch that bridge.
Thank you. On your turn, Cheryl.
Thank you. And the last survey that was, citywide survey that was done was in 2015, and in that survey, and so we need to do a new one, we need to do another one. But the three top priorities were law enforcement or safety and security, water quality, to Katie's point, and Jack's point, and addressing the sort of living in the city versus vacation rental, so the whole short-term rental challenges that we had. And so I feel like we made some good progress in terms of the water quality and the long-term planning with the water advisory committee recommending new water storage tanks, fixing the leaks in the distribution system. The city's done a great job of getting grants for those activities. I think the STR committee's done a fabulous job of setting a new policy and setting caps for short-term rentals. Law enforcement, I think we still have work to do, and I think the city's committed to that, and I think it's going to take, you know, possibly a little more budget, but it's also a matter of being able to hire the right people for the job, getting employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we will begin with you, Katie. The question is, what is the most significant change you see coming to Trinidad in the next 10 to 20 years, and how do you believe we should tackle it as a city and as a community?
The thing that occurs to me is that we need more housing and we need a way to keep the community viable with finances. So that brings up the issue of long-term housing versus short-term rentals, which is a conundrum, because people's incomes get involved with short-term rentals. But the quality of the town has to be maintained. So how to square that circle is going to take us all coming together so that we don't pull apart over it. And of course, water has to be sustained, or nothing is going to happen.
Thank you. Cheryl, your answer, please.
Can you please repeat the question?
What is the most significant change you see coming to Trinidad in the next 10 to 20 years, and how do you believe we should tackle it as a city and as a community?
I think climate change is probably one of the biggest kind of macro effects that we'll see in Trinidad. Certainly, we are feeling the impact of the economic challenges, and we're feeling, you know, we certainly have experienced a pandemic, so it's all those bigger kind of global issues. But climate change, I think, is affecting us, and I think that's why people are concerned about water and why we're looking for different ways to, different ways to capture water, things like rainwater catchment, looking at our existing systems, how we can make them more efficient, and also looking to see if there are other places, other sources for water. So that's kind of, kind of critical. And I think for those of us who live close to the ocean, right, where we're looking at the Humboldt Bay, the plans that have been presented about managing, you know, the rising sea levels. So I think climate change is a big deal. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, your answer, please.
People come to Trinidad for a small town feel, and I see that this is a destination that people come from all over the world to come here to see this unique place on earth. What I see happening to this town in the next 20 years is a kind of a huge population growth. We're going to unfortunately see more building and a lot of extra ADUs built. We're going to unfortunately see a lot more growth than the population wants to have happen. So I believe in growth, but I don't believe in too much growth to change the feel of the town, and that's what I would support.
Thank you. Mike, your answer, please.
Pretty much the same one I had 10 years ago. I'd like to see the general plan get finished. Cheryl shares the same frustration. We worked hard on the planning, and I thought we kind of had it all done, get on the council, and we're on our third draft revision right by now. So I like that as a way to get public input, we worked hard on it, get professional input with Trevor, and come back to the council and bang it out. So I'd say, yeah, it might take another 10 years to do it, but I'll add on to that to kind of wrap up the thumbnail acre issue. I'd love to see that get finished, and that's again, something that, you know, those are gold 10 years ago, too, so those are my biggest ones. I'm not as concerned about breath, as long as we keep our septic system, go connect to have water, I think we'll be fine.
Thank you. The next question, we will begin with you, Cheryl. The question is, how do you define respectful democracy and respectful debate and disagreement? And how do you try to embody these definitions?
So I just read something the other day that debate is the oxygen of democracy. So I believe that hearing different sides of an issue are critical. However, I think it's all in the way that you state your opinion. So I believe things should be fact-based. I think we should not be personal in our discussions, and I think, given that we're such a small community, that's especially imperative, because as we go to the grocery union, we go to Murphy's, and we run into each other, I just prefer to keep things respectful, and I guess that's how I define it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, your answer, please.
A good one, because I feel like we've really just got one side of a lot of things now, and in our country and even in our town, it's really important to note that if you have an opposing opinion, it's not an extremist opinion, and I think it goes for both sides, if you will. So I think there's a way to have humor about it, to be respectful, and to hold each other personally accountable when something happens, and I'm not afraid to do any of that.
Thank you. Katie, your answer, please.
A great question. You know, I think of my work politically and the degree of conflict that can be engendered when people aren't listening to each other, and it becomes a power struggle. I'm right, no, I'm right. And, you know, it's like the proverbial elephant with three blind men, each grasping a different part of the elephant, claiming they know what the elephant is. And we've all got a piece of the elephant, and somehow to, through public processing, through really listening, we have to add those pieces together to make a whole. It's that processing that holds my focus.
Thank you. Jack, your answer, please.
Thank you. I echo what Cheryl said. She had very good points. I believe in peaceful conflict. I feel like if everyone can respect each other, we can get a lot accomplished. We've seen a lot of issues with our current political system right now, when one side thinks they're totally right and the other side thinks they're totally right, and there's no way for both of them to come together or become good. I strongly disagree with anyone being completely right. I feel like there's, people can come together without name-calling, without pointing fingers. I just want, in this town, you have to make friends, and you don't want to have enemies. That's my goal, is to continue to work together without any conflict.
Thank you. Next question, we will begin with you, Katie, and the question is, how might the city support collaboration with local Native American organizations to bring age-appropriate education about Native American history and culture into Trinidad school?
No, that's a question that I think I will pass on. I don't know enough yet. It's a great question and something that I want to find out about, but I don't feel like I'm in a position to really offer a rounded answer.
Thank you. Jack, your answer, please.
Definitely support any new education for the children of Trinidad, absolutely, and I would love to learn more about it myself, because I'm too, I'm educated in what can be brought to the table, but I'd be for and propose any idea that the Native American communities could bring to the council or to the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mike, your answer, please.
Seems like we've changed a bit over the past few years with a couple of flashpoints in town, the lighthouse and some other things that have gone on back in the day, if you would. When I was on the council, we were working a lot with the Ranch Row and Safer's to schools, and to answer your question, I think I'd like to get an update and have the schools come over and school boards and have parent night, and see what they want to do, because they're the ones that know best for their kids. I just think there's, there's a way the council could be more, work out many, sort of usher that role, make it happen in the community. It doesn't seem to be happening right now.
Thank you. Cheryl, your answer, please.
I think this may be an opportunity for the council to help broker discussions between the local school and the tribal entities, if it's not already happening. I'm not going to assume that it's not already happening, but I know that it was Indigenous Peoples' Day last week, and I read there was some really good, there was some really good content online, and it was available for teachers, and I read through some of the things that they had, some of the materials, and so there's a lot of good stuff that's already out there that could be leveraged and maybe made a little more custom to really reflect the indigenous people of our area, like the Yurok tribe and the other tribes. So I think it's a very interesting question and something that the city council could take a more active role, absolutely.
Thank you. Mike, we will begin with you with this question. There are a couple of questions about law enforcement, asking if you have ideas about providing regular basis law enforcement and perhaps more during the summer, during the tourist season.
Like I said in my first response about my priorities, I'd like to see our police department back, and if we have to ask the city to vote on that, you know, so, yeah, that's a perfect tax increase reason for me. It's like, here we have a need, we all want police in town, more in the summer apparently, and the way to do that is say, okay, how much do you want it? Do you want to raise sales tax? That's the way to address it. So, yeah, I want to get it back in town. I'd like to have Trinidad police in Trinidad again.
Thank you. Cheryl, your answer, please.
Well, this one's kind of near and dear to my heart, too, because I've been thinking about this a lot. I think safety and security is really the number one charter for a city government, safety and security for citizens, for the community. So I think funding is one side of the equation. Another side has been that there's a shortage of police officers, and so we kicked around the idea of getting some private security to assist our sheriff's department. It turned out that that wasn't necessary in the end, and now the city has looked at funding an additional, I believe it's a part-time deputy. It's not a city council meeting, so I can't turn to the city manager and ask, but that's something I think we're going to do a deep dive in the city council meeting in the next two months, to really get to how can we ensure that we've got not only the right amount of coverage, but that they're going to the right places, because we've got some hotspots in town. So, anyway, I think that's, that's very important. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Jack, your turn.
So I've lived here for three years, and my car has broken into about three times picking different things, and each time we call our friend who's a sheriff and he comes by, and he let, he let us know that he doesn't have the support staff to, to have us, to be in Trinidad all the time. He's between here and Willow Creek, and he does a circle, and it's just not good enough for this town. So definitely want to work with the council to get more funding for police staff here. And I definitely want to check out maybe private security if that's an option, or part-time officer during the nighttime, because it seems like we're having the issues at night, and we're having it over by the library and the watchful area. So I'd like to have more coverage over there.
Thank you. Katie, your answer, please.
I concur with what's been said. I have to say, moving here, I have felt such a sense of safety coming from Los Angeles. You can imagine the contrast, and it's, but I don't want to turn a blind eye that peacefulness and lawfulness is maintained with help, and so I'm definitely in favor of having a police presence. It keeps people on their toes, and then there's help if you need it.
Thank you. Jack, we will begin with you for this question. Is the city still spending $35,000 approximately on the upgrade of the city's water plant? What is the latest report?
That's a great question, and I do not have those stats in front of me about the city manager, but, um, thank you.
Thank you. Katie, your answer, please.
When I heard the recent water report, I believe that those figures are correct in terms of the contracting, but I believe the city council is moving towards and seeing if someone can be hired, but you have to find the right people, too. So I, my impression from having sat in the audiences and council meetings is that this is on their minds and that they are working towards a solution.
Thank you. Cheryl, your answer.
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to repeat the question again. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the questions.
Is the city still spending $35,000 approximately on the upgrade of the city's water plant? And what is the latest report?
So I would say, yes, the city is still paying contract resources to run the plant. And the city needed to do that to keep the plant in operation because of the shortage of qualified, certified individuals. However, I think it's imperative that we, and I think we're all committed to moving away from that model and going back to a state of independence where we have our own employees. So the idea was that the contractors would train the new folks, and they would get certified, and then the contractor would move on. Having said that, it was raised at the city council meeting this week, and we have asked the city manager to come in and give us an update, a deep dive on what exactly is going on. And then also, at the Water Advisory Committee, we're going to have the new plant manager, as well as the city manager and the contractor, do a deep dive for us on exactly where we're at in that transition.
Thank you. Your turn, Mike?
Shocking is that number is. I think it's even higher. When I first heard that, I thought out of my chair. And it did come as a surprise, I think for other, I think Bryce Kenny also voiced his voice across the Zoom call for that one, too. You don't understand all the facts about it. So I'd be surprised. I think it's probably a lot more than that, and look forward to hearing the city's plans on it. I think that's best addressed in the city.
Thank you. Katie, we will begin with you for the next question, which is, which would you prioritize, keeping Trinidad small or expanding tourist services?
Either or questions always make my ears stand up, because the answer is both "and," not either or. That the, we must be aware of our tourist trade. It is one of the major industries that keeps the city going. But if we lose our homes and the town that we love, no, I said "we." I feel almost presumptuous since I'm a newly, but I, it is a "we." The town that we love, if we lose the character, then, okay, what, I mean, that's just not, it's not acceptable. So somehow, to both deal with the industry that we have some dependence upon tourism and the town that has a character that keeps us all here and keeps us walking the streets with our dogs.
Thank you. Mike, it's your turn?
Yes, both. Yes. Everybody that's here loves Trinidad. And that's what we like to share about it, if we'd like to share Trinidad with people visiting. So, yeah, it's not mutually exclusive thing. They both go hand in hand. Keeping our town the way it is, it's a joy, and sharing it's a joy.
Thank you. Jack, your answer, please?
I definitely would like to keep the town with more families. And I want to grow the amount of families that are in this town. I feel it's important to have people here on the long term. I would encourage policies to convert, to entice STR owners to convert their rentals to 30 days. I've seen that in a lot of different cities around the state, where the city will encourage them momentarily to move them from an STR to a long-term rental, bringing more families into the city. Definitely highly support that. I feel the STR policy is good right now, but I feel like we need to convert more of those back to 30-day rentals so more families can go back into town.
Cheryl, your turn, please?
At this point, I like keeping Trinidad. I would like Trinidad to continue to have the character that it has. I really enjoy the nature. I think that's what brought me here. So the sustainability, sustainability is key. The environment is key. You know, just keeping things as they are is probably really good for Trinidad to a degree. And I don't think there's a lot of room to build out in Trinidad. I mean, there are physical barriers to building out the city. So having said that, I think some affordable housing, you know, in the form of a few ADUs here and there, accessory dwelling units, excuse me, here and there, by law, state law. We do need to have some capability to do that in certain locations. I'm not a fan of 8,000 square foot homes and that kind of thing, and I like to protect people's views. So I think, you know, we have a nice character as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, we will begin with you, and the question is, would you support a financial oversight committee composed of citizen volunteers who do not hold office or work for the city of Trinidad? Do you think restricting Trinidad's water capacity is the best way or the only way to control development?
Yes, and for the water development, it's one of the ways. Like I said earlier, having our town on septic is a really great choke on growth. It's also a great way to deal with our waste environment. It's one of the best ways. So, yes, I'd love to see citizens more involved. That's a big part of why I do what I do and why I show at the council meetings, because that's what I'd like other people to do as well.
Thank you. Cheryl, your answer, please?
I think that the city council has a fiduciary responsibility to the community. That's one of the reasons that you have a city council is to review and have oversight over budget planning and fiscal responsibility. Having citizens involved in that or having a committee or task force, it could work. If the council's doing its job, it shouldn't be necessary. And we should get, be transparent about the budget with everybody in the community, and everybody should be able to weigh in and say, yes or no, it's working. I don't think restricting water capacity is the only way to control growth either. I think you can do it with building codes and also septic. I think, long term, we will have to look at all of our options for getting water and keep an open mind about it.
Thank you. Katie, your answer, please?
The idea of more and more committees, whether it be an oversight committee in this case, is not appealing to me. I think we're having trouble getting enough volunteers for the volunteer positions that we need already. So I would be in favor of, you know, a website that was up to date and easier to read. I would also like to see the audience in the city council meetings be pomer, so that people actually came and knew what was going on and that there was, that the meetings were more of a communication back and forth, not just, not just between the council members. So that the public was informed as it went. They didn't need an oversight committee.
Thank you. Jack, your turn?
Yeah, I echo what Katie was saying. I feel like we just need more, more community support. I love seeing all of those finding bases here tonight. If you guys were here at every meeting, the budget meetings, we wouldn't need another oversight committee. We just would need more community support, more people showing up to the meetings and speaking. We can't just be two people at every meeting telling us what to do. So we want more community support. And I agree with Mike, with the onsite water systems currently have. That limits our growth in this town. And that's going to, that's our big lever to prevent growth in this town. Thanks.
Thank you. The next question is really a combination of several that came in. It has to do with a comparison of Leffinholz Creek or the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, and whether or not you think one is better than the other, and if there should be any kind of research done into it, like an environmental impact analysis. So how do you feel about those two possibilities of water? And should there be more research done into it? Start with Cheryl.
So I think a lot of research has been done. And I think we've, we've pretty much determined that Leffinholz Creek is viable for the short term. And by short term, I mean, I'm saying short term, that's my, that is my opinion. That part was not the science necessarily. But that Leffinholz Creek is viable for the city's water needs as it stands today and into the future. As I mentioned earlier, we're updating some of the infrastructure. That would have to be done, whether you need good water tanks, you need good water storage, you need a distribution system without leaks, whether you are sourcing your water from Leffinholz Creek or whether you're sourcing it from Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. There was a lot of concern about growth if we hooked up to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. I personally think that 20 years from now, we're going to probably, you know, going in the far future, that it would be a viable approach. So I'm just going to state my own personal opinion based on the information that I've read. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, your answer, please?
At the time, I was urging the council to vote yes on connecting to the Humboldt Bay. But seeing that the council at the time did not want to move forward with that, I'm now learning about what we have to deal with with Leffinholz Creek. I definitely feel like fixing leaks is one of the biggest problems that we were facing last year. So happy to see those have been almost all addressed. I believe in better water storage at our current facility. And I would support keeping what we currently have and conserving the water at our current.
Thank you. Mike, it's your turn?
My position initially, my knee-jerk is, yeah, let's stay with what's working and not grow the city. But Paul isn't liking me a lot about this, and I see maybe outside of Trinidad perspective that it can have before. So I think it's good that we let and support the studies through the county, let them pay for it. And then I can check in with Patty and say, how's the creek doing this year? Anything to worry about? I haven't heard any problems in 17 years. Yes, we've had slow years. Now we're doing double. So, yeah, I think what's working is working in long term. Visioning is wonderful, but we'll have time if we need to. I'd support the county doing that work.
Thank you. Katie, your answer, please?
I'm glad that at this point, right now, there has been a decision to stay with what we have. I imagine that in the long term, we are going to need a more, a different source of water. We've got climate change coming, we've got drought. And if we move into issues like annexing or, you know, increasing Trinidad's boundaries at some point, then we're going to need more water. But I'm not, you know, promoting growth. I'm just saying that things tend to grow, and we may well need to look at other sources. But I'd be in favor of really examining how to control growth now, before the monster is on us, and see what can be done so that we have control if this does occur.
Thank you. Katie, we are going to begin with you for the next question. And it is, how do you feel about the continued closure of the Van Wijk Trail? Or is it Van Wick or Van Wike Trail, despite an appeal to the California Postal Commission?
I walked down there yesterday just to try and see for myself what it was like to try and walk on the trail. And it's dicey, and it's closed in addition. So, you know, the trail system, several people have told me that they're concerned about the trail system's not being, you know, well-kept up. And so I'm definitely in favor of a study on that and some, the positions and the arguments being made clear, and then maybe a public forum on it, so that people can say what they think should happen and see what the problems are, why we can't get a good trail system going that everyone is happy with.
Thank you. Mike, your answer, please?
It's a shame because it's gotten eroded as it's gotten. I was here when, I guess, Inno did the fix for $50,000 a long time ago. It held for a long time. And that was always like, I was proposing to have it do it again if we could talk them into it. And I think that if that maintenance had happened, we probably still have a little trail going through there, no problems. That being said, we have new owners in that area, and I think it'd be important to talk to them and see, people's going through your backyard, and make sure we have that at the forefront of our decision. And then I'd support re-making that a very simple, safe trail and opening it again, depending on where we're going with the owners there.
Thank you. Jack, your answer, please?
I think if it's, so I guess I would preface this by saying that I'm a trail runner, and I've been a trail runner for 30 years. I love trails. And I explore all the trails in Trinidad pretty frequently. I miss the Van Wijk Trail. I'd like to see it open. But I think it needs to be viable from an engineering standpoint. So I think we could do something that's kind of a lighter version of some of the things that we proposed in the past. And I would also, in that case, want to hear from the tribal entities, particularly the Sheri Ancestral Society and the Yurok tribe and the Rancheria, the three tribal entities, on what their views are on that, because I've heard that they have some concerns about reopening that trail. So we would need to be culturally sensitive in our approach, but I do favor opening it.
Thank you. Jack?
Yeah, absolutely. I missed that trail when I first came to Trinidad years ago. That was how I would go to the beach, and it's very sad to see that trail gone. I would definitely want to work with the native community here to see how we could reopen that land. I believe we had a grant to fix it, but it was blocked by the native community. So definitely would like to work with them a little bit more and find out what their concerns are, so we can get that trail back open.
Thank you. Mike, we'll begin with you for this question. How do you propose to get citizens more involved in city government?
Well, having public meetings, again, is really wonderful. That's a good step. And we've, one of the very few good things about going through the pandemic and COVID lockdowns, we have a good system now, so people are calling in, which is nice. Have a little involvement. It's nice. We have access somehow, recording things. All those things, I think, can help out. Good question, though. I think by maybe allowing more time for public comment and probably treating the public with more respect than they've been treated in the past, kind of what Katie was saying, less chit-chat up here, let's hear from the public and then hear the chit-chat. So those are just meeting things that can happen. But I'd also like to see maybe a couple of days in between when the agenda's put out and when public can comment on agenda items. I think that could help out a lot, so if people are rushing at the last minute trying to get their public comments in, it's very frustrating when you're really involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, your answer, please?
Definitely having, like, moving away from Zoom calls to having people in person. I think people are still scared to come to face-to-face with other people right now. But just encourage more community involvement and having more people being vocal. And I feel like the council, the current council, would love to have that same level of respect that we give them to the city. And I feel like we will, like, anyone that comes to the table, we will give you respect. Not necessarily, and we typically don't get that respect back, but that's okay. That's just our job. So, thank you.
Cheryl, you're next?
I actually think that we do have a very engaged community. I think that in Trinidad, I believe that 80, 90% of the community votes. And so there's engagement that way. However, I agree that it would be nice to see more attendance, not just at the city council, but also the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission does a lot of really good work. There's a risk, if we don't have that, that there are a small number of people influencing decisions versus the broader community, and that's a risk for you all. I like the idea, there's kind of three other practical things I would do. One is, I've been, I have this vision of we do more workshops, so longer, kind of not necessarily longer meetings, but like working sessions where the public can come in and, you know, whiteboard things, and we can kind of go deeper on things like the general plan. Technology can help. So I'm a big believer in technology. And I think our website, I think we all can agree, needs work. And I am personally very committed to making that happen. And then finally, I agree with the statement about making things more engaging. So I think...
So I think, let's not get the bell. I knew somebody would give the bell. Anyway, thank you.
You know, I've been going to the town council meetings and just to kind of get the lay of the land. And sitting in the audience, it has been very instructive in the sense that I can see that it's not a whole lot of fun. Sitting, you know, and so one thing is I'd like to see the city council talk to the people. But then, of course, you need people there to talk to. And it'd be a conversation, not just a quick business this way. And it occurs to me that with technology, the way we've got it, we could send out the, the city council could send out the agenda way ahead of time saying, and written in English rather than, you know, cryptically. So that people know, hey, these things are coming up and I care about that and I should go and I should, you know, and I'll have time to talk. And the interaction will bring people in.
Thank you. Jack, we're going to start with you for this question. Do you feel there is a conflict of interest concerning the use of contracted employees, engineers, planners, and projects pursued that may not be compatible with the city but are grant-funded?
Thank you for the question. I do not have an answer to that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Katie.
The answer to pass as well, in talking to people in town, I have heard some sentiment about wondering about that. But I'm not, I don't have enough facts or information to take a position myself, so I will pass.
Thank you. Mike, your answer, please.
Yes, I'm very concerned about it. I think that, especially because we have such a small group that can do the work up here. We have great engineers, great projects, but I do feel like the grant process drives a lot of what we do in the city. And seeing it tore up every other year, if not every year, is really no fun. So I feel like we should be doing more setting priorities from the general plan and then going after grants, not letting the grants drive what we do, what we spend our money on in the city. So start short answer, yes. I would watch that.
Thank you. Cheryl, your answer, please.
Can you repeat the question again? Because there was a little bit to unpack there.
Do you feel there is a conflict of interest concerning the use of contracted employees, engineers, planners, and projects pursued that may not be compatible with the city but are grant-funded?
Yeah, I guess, I think that, to go back to what we talked about earlier, I think we need to make sure that the city council takes its responsibility for oversight very seriously and evaluate where there might be conflicts of interest. And because we are a small community, there are sort of only a finite number of contractors that we can work with sometimes that do, that have certain skills, certain skill sets. And so I think we have to look at that and keep tabs on that. There's nothing that jumps out at me that's glaring at the moment that I've seen that is a huge conflict of interest. But I think there's some areas where we probably should look a little closer. So I don't know if that helps. Thank you.
In the interest of time, this will be our last question and we will begin with you, Katie. The question is, how will you address the ongoing need for affordable housing and supportive housing in Trinidad?
The state has greenlit ADUs, housing and dwelling units. And I'm in favor of those because they are long-term. They make the possibility for long-term rentals. And I'd like to see a lot more of those small ones, a small ADUs. For example, there's an artist community that I'd really like to see be able to be housed in Trinidad. So that's one thing. In terms of bringing more families, and I hear this over and over again, this is important, but that there's very little housing and housing costs have gone so high that squeezing a lot of people out. We may need to, you know, have a study committee on this or to think long and hard about how to do that. I don't think there's a ready solution and no one across the country has found it yet.
Thank you. Next is Cheryl.
So I agree with Jack about maybe encouraging month-to-month rentals. I think that helps. And I agree with Katie on ADUs, small ones and only in the properties that, you know, have enough room to allow them. And then I think one thing we tend to forget is that we do have some affordable housing in Mobile Home Park next to Murphy's that is long-term now. It's not short-term vacation rentals. And so there are quite a number of folks there. And I think that's nice. I think it's good to keep that as an option. I don't have another brilliant idea because I think, as I mentioned before, I mean, we're basically one square mile, our town, with only a few kind of buildable lots left. So it would be hard to put a lot of affordable housing in.
Thank you. Jack, your turn.
So I'm definitely for ADUs. I feel like there's a lot of garages that could be converted to an ADU or a JADU in this town. Definitely feel that we could encourage more STR owners to convert their houses to long-term rentals. And when walking the streets, I see about 15% to 20% of the houses not even being used by owners. So there's definitely room for growth in this town. And I just feel, I definitely support more families, more people living here full-time because that's what makes the community strong.
Thank you. Mike, your turn.
Welcome to ADU mandate or law, whatever's going on now. I tried to make it ADU. When I first moved here for firefighters to live above my garage and kind of launched the whole ADU, VDU, STR, STR stuff to try to do it the right way. Asked for permission and we'll do it. And it never got done. But unlike some of my fellow candidates, I support our STRs 100%. And I have a pretty good position being in the industry myself as a commercial business. Next door, we have a Brandon family and they've remodeled their house and they're getting ready to move up here with three daughters. And they bought another house that they're remodeling and they'd like to do an STR there. They didn't make it in the lottery thing, so they don't have that income. And that's a perfect example of a great family to support. We have such a small community. It's so easy to evaluate these things on a one-on-one basis. It could create variances where they can be helping out a family to encourage that. But people who have property should be able to do within the law, regulate, and they make great neighbors. I have STRs right around me.
Thank you. It is now time for the candidates to give you their closing statement. Topics we didn't have time to address from your questions were encouraging students to go into law enforcement and enhancing safety and security in Trinidad. You might wish to address those in your closing statement. And we will begin closing with Katie.
What do I want to say? I feel honored to put my candidacy forward and to have this opportunity to talk to you. And in preparing for tonight, a lot of neighbors came forth and told me about their concerns and tried to help me to see things from different perspectives. And I, just that exercise alone, I feel part of, more a part of this community than I did two months ago even. So I, you know, I would welcome your vote for me so that I can participate fully on the city council and become fully educated in the things that I don't know about yet.
Thank you. Jack, your closing statement.
So I grew up in a family, a big family of four boys. I was the youngest. I was picked on. I was bullied. But I was the quiet one in the group. I was definitely the one that would listen to everyone in my family and listen to their concerns and try to keep everyone's wishes and things going forward. I feel like I learned a lot in growing in that family because I listened to people. I listened to their concerns. I value everyone's opinion. And I want everyone to treat each other with respect. And that's what I bring to the council. I want to bring respect. I want to bring people here to talk about their concerns because I want to help everyone here. So I just want to thank you for your vote and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Mike, your closing statement, please.
So thank you guys for coming tonight. It's great to see all these people here. And thank you for doing the forum. It's been really fun. It's a great honor to be a part of it. I'm just going to go to our Humboldt voters guide and read part of my qualifications and candidate statement. Fellow residents, my name is Mike Morgan. I appreciate consideration and your vote for city council. I'm a long-term 17-year resident and business owner at Trinidad Bay Bed and Breakfast Hotel. If you voted for me in 2020, I need your vote again. If you didn't, I welcome this opportunity. I won't waste your time. Like many of you in town, in your nation, in the world, I have been going through some dark times these past couple of years. Every day, I'm grateful to be here, looking for truth and shining light on wrongs. To be brutally honest, I want government control out of our wallets, out of our homes, out of our bodies and off our faces. I'll leave it there.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the city of Trinidad, Trinidad-ing the venue and all of the people. Oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl.
I thought I got it.
That's okay. I was, I was going to let her roll, yeah. Thank you. So I would echo Mike's thank you to the lead woman voters for having this forum. I think it's the first time we've done it in Trinidad. If I'm elected, I'm going to kind of keep doing what I've been doing, which is to continue to kind of try to get the general plan done, work on the water advisory committee so we have some water resiliency. I want to continue to push for law enforcement, increase in law enforcement, safety and security. I think really a hot button for me has been getting our website into shape. And so I'm really committed to work on that. I have a background in technology and I'm excited to work on that and kind of make it some, you know, something that's really a great tool for us to use. And, you know, fundamentally, I just, I appreciate your consideration and, you know, kindly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try again now to thank the city of Trinidad for the venue and for all the technology. And thank you to lead members Cheryl McCutten, Jessica Schlatter and Ann Deal for help. And thank you for being an attentive audience and for the good questions. Thank you to all the candidates for being willing to take your time to speak with the audience about your views for this important position. And we assure you are registered to vote on November the 8th. Vote on November 8th. Make democracy work. Thank you. We are now going to have a short break, about five minutes. And then we will present a forum on the pros and cons of the tourist occupancy tax.
Am, what are you? Yes, we are. Thank you, everyone.
Welcome back to our tour for a look at the tourist occupancy, occupancy tax. The tourist occupancy tax was placed on the ballot as measure P by the Trinidad City Council, and if approved by the majority of Trinidad voters, will increase the natural rate to be collected from guests of hotels or short-term rentals from eight percent to twelve percent. The tourist occupancy tax currently provides approximately $130,000 per year to the general fund in favor services and programs such as public safety, law enforcement, roads, and other uses. It is estimated that the increase would generate an additional $65,000 per year in revenue. Speaking in favor of the tax will be Steve Ledwig, and speaking against the tax will be Michael Morgan. The format for this forum will be as follows. Each panelist will have up to two minutes to prevent, present his facts and reasons for the position he has taken. Then I will give each panelist one minute to respond to the opening statement of the opponent. After that, each panelist will have one minute to answer each of your questions. Jessica will give you a card. Hold your hand up if you want a card to write a question. After each panelist, after they've answered your questions, the panelists have drawn numbers for the order of the closing statements, which will be one minute. I will use a random grid for the order of the questions. Please remember, this is not a debate. Panelists will not engage in discussion with one another. They will pay attention to the timer and finish their sentence when the stop sign appears. Presenting the pro side of this issue is Steve Ledwig. Presenting against the issue is Michael Morgan. The first, first we will begin with Mike Morgan.
I'm trying to read this in two minutes, but it's basically exactly what you get in your voter's guide. So the argument against measure P, four percent tax increase, how about no? With the highest inflation in decades and a recession that may lead to a depression, raising taxes and spending is exactly the opposite of what would help our economic crisis. As reported in our recent budget sessions, the city is sitting on a comfortable reserve, it's going to be a million bucks, and our city sales tax is making up for occupancy taxes and lodging businesses we lost due to the pandemic and restrictions. Our sales taxes passed with a sunset clause and should have expired a decade ago. It was meant for fire and police. As occupancy taxes were first assessed for supporting tourism, lodging, and promotion, these taxes have all been absorbed into the city general fund and spent disproportionately on city expenses and job positions. It's not a fair increase or a risk, it's not a fair increase or a reasonable time to tax our Trinidad guests and visitors more. How about come back to voters with a two percent increase after we get back to a more stable and sound economy? So maybe it's not enough. Maybe it's not right now. Please support our Trinidad small lodging businesses, their employees and guests, and our community, which benefits from our visitors and their stays. Where am I with time?
You have forty-five seconds.
I don't think I can read the second one in that time, but I'll start out with integrity is commitment to truth. Like their proposed four percent tax increase, the council argument for measure P is also not fair. At the current eight percent tax, out-of-town visitors already pay more than their fair share. City sales tax is fair. It is paid equally by visitors, overnight guests, and residents. Each city property, whether they have overnight stays or not, pays taxes that already cover our general plan, fund. So how is additionally charging overnight guests twelve percent of their rent each night fair? It's not. To be an equitable fair share, maybe each property owner should also pay twelve percent of their rent each night. The council should check its math. I appreciate the council putting this on the ballot like they're supposed to by the U.S. Constitution. That's from a letter that we sent on January first from Trinidad Bay Bed and Breakfast.
Thank you. Steve, your statement, please.
Thank you very much, and thanks for coming out this evening. So the council discussed this in an open public meeting about the tax, and we definitely were incorrect in passing an ordinance to increase the tax. We learned this and we brought it back to the voters, or we're bringing it to the voters. And so what we do with transient occupancy tax, when I started the council six years ago, there was quite a bit of difficulty in getting city business done. We had a very small staff. And so the council has been looking at ways at supporting getting the business done so that our residents could get building permits and all the different things that happen in a coastal zone. And we also look to our budget. And I mean, we could plan as much as possible with sales tax, but we do know that certain changes have occurred and will occur. The most significant financially was the loss of the cell tower contract voted down by the city to remove the cell towers from the head. Well, that came with a, with a cost. And so this transient occupancy tax is to partially make up for that lost revenue. We're also seeing, and we know this, a loss of revenue from the Harvard loan fee to trust. And so prudent planning says, when you know that you're going to have a reduced income from taxes, that you look at either reducing the city services or increasing the revenue to make up for the loss. And the city has benefited from a very robust staff, getting a lot done, and not just keeping up, but actually getting ahead. And so you'll see that. And so that's why we are in favor of this tax.
Thank you. Mike, you have one minute to respond to the comments by Steve if you choose.
I do choose. It's more of an ideological tax argument that I would propose as a rebuttal, that if we are losing funds somewhere, that be made up not on the backs of guests that have no say in being taxed, and not because it's the easiest way to raise money, taxing people who are just visiting, and it's not that big of a tax on a stay and all these arguments that I've heard. In my opinion, and it's my firm, honest belief, taxing should reflect the service provided. If Trinidad was providing more services for guests, yeah, taxing for it, but they're not. And I see my thirty seconds, so I'm finished there.
Thank you. Steve, you may choose to respond to the comments that Mike made at the beginning.
I feel as if our position is clear, so I don't have any prepared rebuttal options.
Thank you. Steve, we will begin with you with the first question. Why is it unfair to ask visitors to contribute at an industry standard level to their enjoyment and use of our town? When I visit other areas, I am obligated to do so.
I think I understand the question. So what, basically what I, I think what is, what I'm hearing is that the industry standard, at least in this area now, the county just recently increased the county TOT to twelve percent, and so we're following suit. So I believe we're staying within the industry standard. I just want to make sure I wasn't
County, Yucaya, Humboldt County, Santa Barbara, Captain Bay, either ten or twelve percent.
Right. Okay. So I just want to make sure I was understanding the question. Okay.
Yes, thank you. Mike, your end.
I'll have you read the question if it's not. It's a good question, but it's
Why is it unfair to ask visitors to contribute at an industry standard level to their enjoyment and use of our town? When I visit other areas, I am obligated to do so. And then it's ten or twelve percent in these others that were listed.
Again, it's kind of what I said before. If the city's providing service to match the tax, that'd be great, but guests are already paying eight percent. And again, it's might not be the time to jack out with four percent. So I don't think the unfair part doesn't make sense to me. I think our guests already provide so much extra when they stay here besides bringing their culture from wherever they're visiting, whether it's London or Germany, we have guests from everywhere. That's a plus in our community. And then what they do in our local businesses and at my business, it's obvious. So they already pay a fair share. And increasing taxes on them because the county raised taxes or because Marin has higher taxes is beyond my comprehension.
Thank you. I only have one more question. So if you in the audience have any questions, please get a card from Jessica and write it out for us. So this question is, would you spend the $65,000 raised from the tax totally on law enforcement and safety and full-time police or sheriff? And I begin with Mike.
Yeah, that's not what it's for. Tourist occupancy tax should support businesses that support the tourists and tourism and things like that, including our, our community, the own civic club, like people like that to help our community and make Trinidad the special places to visit. I support, like I said, as a candidate, putting it to the voters and saying, hey, do you want a police department? Again, here's what it's going to cost. We've done the study. Here's, here's what it's going to cost. We need a special tax and tax for that specifically.
Thank you. Steve?
I would see an increase of $60,000. Again, it's going to make up for some projected shortfalls. But if there's any way that we can add police protection to this area, we struggle with it. Not only is it difficult to find deputies, train deputies in the area, it's difficult to keep them. So anything that we can do to, to do that. And I think that's why this, this TOT is, is a useful tax is because it goes into the general fund. And then at our budget meetings that we have every year, we ask for community involvement on how to spend that. And so if there's the ability to add additional protection, then that would be a great use of this money.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, it will be time for a closing statement from each of the candidates or the speakers. I give them up to two minutes since we have extra time. And we begin with Steve, if you want to take.
Yeah, I would happily sell mine because we need money at the, at the city here so I can sell my minutes. No, I'm kidding. No, I just, taxes are difficult, right? Everybody has a, feels like we're always getting taxed on lots of things or being asked to, to contribute. I believe that this is a way to, to help us do the work that the city needs to do. I believe that we're managing the resources that we do have with personnel responsibly. And the cost of doing business in the transient occupancy tax discussion is increased safety concerns as we bring more people to the, to the city, is increased pressure on our infrastructure, our streets and our parking and our, our traffic flow become very significantly affected by more people coming to the community. And so we do have an opportunity here to turn that money directly into addressing the concerns that, that the community has regarding increased number of people in the community. And it's not just people who stay there. There's just a lot of people that come to our town, whether they're driving through or staying there. And so this is a, I believe anyway, a unique opportunity. I'm, I feel it's unfortunate that we did wrong the first time from eight percent to ten percent. So it feels like a big jump. So I, I understand that. I very much understand that. But I do believe that it's keeping in line with what the city's goals are and what the community's responsibilities are.
Thank you. Mike, your closing statement. You have up to two minutes.
Well, what I'm going to do, two minutes. I don't think taxes are difficult. I think people are happy to pay taxes on services. I think it's difficult when they're misled. I think it's difficult when they're not treated with respect. And I just like, if you're honest with, with people in town and say, hey, look, we want to have a new water basin cashman treatment system out in, in school, and would you support a tax on that to pay for it? Most people would be like, yeah, sure, let's do it. We haven't done that well in the past. I helped get the fire, say, police sales tax passed, and it was supposed to sunset. We didn't live up to it. We just morphed it into pay for the general management. So we don't have a good record. I have very gun-shined taxes, but I still think that's directed taxes passed at about a sixty percent vote is the best way to go. And let the chips fall where they may. Our community can decide for this. So I'll just say, again, going back to your voter guide, I put a lot of work into that. And I'd say truth and transparency are fair. To be fair, measure P is not on the ballot because the city carefully studied the issue and listened to guests and the businesses required to collect, account for, and pay this tax. The city has been unconstitutionally overcharging guests for years. Without voter consideration, it raised the tax to twelve percent January first, 2022. And then I listed the part of the California constitution that requires us to go to voters. Took them four months. It wasn't done immediately, four months to research what my letter said and research the constitution that I read. Given the current economy and forecast for higher inflation and deeper recession, it is not a fair or reasonable time to raise taxes. Please support our Trinidad small lodging businesses, their employees and guests, and our community, which benefits from our visitors and their stays. Vote no. Thank you. Thank you guys for staying.
Thank you again for all of you, a good audience, and for speakers being willing to put forward your opinion and your facts. Thank you to the city of Trinidad for providing the venue. Thank you again to Cheryl and Putton, Jessica Schlatter, and Anne Deal for their help with us. Be sure you are registered to vote and then vote on November eighth. Remember, if you want to vote in person, you must take the ballot that was mailed to you with, with you to the polling place to surrender it. And then you will be given a ballot to vote at the polling place if that's what you choose to do. Vote on November eighth. Make democracy work. Thank you.